Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Geldolos, Meringa.
Here.
Norca.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. So before I forget and we get into tonight's business, Councilmember Geldolos is asked to be excused. I think he's celebrating many years of marriage. So is there a motion to excuse Randy from tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great, thank you. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Melanie Kilgore from Granville First Reformed Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that by the pledge of allegiance. Welcome.
I want to introduce myself. I came one time before. I was hired at First Reformed in November, so I still feel pretty new trying to get to know the church, trying to get to know Granville. And it's been great getting to know community leaders, but there's more that I would love to connect with. So one of my passions is connecting churches to their neighbors and to the needs of their community. And I know a lot of you, and maybe some people in here, have needs that you know of in Granville that you don't know how to answer or what to do with them. And I have a church full of people who want to respond to needs. So sometimes I'm told by city leaders that you think this means if we're helping, there's a strings attached or an agenda. It's just simply, we want to serve our community and we want to love our neighbors well. So if you know of any needs, I would love to meet with you. I've emailed some of you, but I think my emails go to spam. So this is kind of my introduction of saying, help me to help others in our community. I would love to talk further with anyone who has those kind of connections or knows other people that we can be connecting with. Will you join me in prayer? Gracious God, we thank you for this evening and this time before us. I thank you for every person who's in this room, for the people who are here because this matters. This time matters, Lord, and we thank you for their investment in this place. I also thank you for all of our leaders, those who guide us and that you have put in these positions. We ask that your blessing would be upon all of them and the work that they do. We ask that you would encourage them and motivate them for the challenges that they face, for the difficult people that they have to work for, for the different perspectives that they see on a regular basis. Lord, for the work that you have called them to do, we give you thanks. And we ask that you would use them to make good things happen in Granville. Lord, we know you care about this place and you care about all of us. So, Lord, would you help us to come together to make this into a city that is just an overwhelming place of blessing for many who live here? We ask that we would speak into the difficult places and the challenges that the city faces, that families and individuals who are here face on a regular basis, Lord. And would you help us to come together to be able to make this a flourishing city? We pray your blessing on all of this and this time before us. For this all in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, thank you so much for being with us. And thank you for continuing what your congregation is doing. I think I, maybe I told you the story. I know these folks have heard it. But my grandmother learned to speak English because of the kindness of several members of your congregation. They're not there anymore. This was over 100 years ago. The Granville First Reformed Church is where my grandmother learned to speak English.
Hopefully we can make bigger communities going forward.
Thank you. You have before you tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We have the minutes from our last meeting, June 12, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Anything anybody would like to point out, additions, corrections, anything else? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay, we have a presentation of bills, about $540,000 tonight. Jane or Dennis, anything you'd like to point out? Jane, anything?
I don't think anything.
Okay. Any questions for either Jane or Dennis about any of the bills tonight? It's a substantial sum, again, a lot going on in the city, a lot of construction and those kinds of things. If there's no questions, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $540,977.95?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. We are at public comment already. So if you would like to address the council, please just come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight.
All right.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. So I'm Pete Dykeis, 33, 36, Barrett Avenue. I just want to first thank city for my brand-new paved road, Barrett South. I am so excited. I've been waiting for a while, and it's just wonderful how quickly they did it. Did a great job, very much lack of interruption. It's been a blast watching the last week, you know, the kids that I never see rolling up and down the road that's nice and smooth now with their scooters and skateboards and stuff. So again, thank you. Very much needed. Just library-related stuff. I don't know if any of you had a chance to go to the Summer Wonder kickoff. That was a blast. Over 450 residents in Granville were there for the puppet show, the carnival stuff, and the child petting museum. I did not go inside and pet the snake, but I did let them coat my beard in blue glitter, so that was kind of fun. So Josh and I had just gone to the Byron Center annual presentation and decided we just couldn't wait the full two months to come see you all again. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for what you're doing at the library. A lot of fun things happening there. Anybody else like to address the council? Kyla, it looked like you were halfway up.
Sorry. Well, you're fine.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kyla Boss, and tonight I just wanted to give you a heads up that there are a couple grants available for, one's a DTE grant and one's a consumers' grant. One of them is limited to just street trees and another one is limited to public property. But the Granville Tree Board would like to write one grant and bring it to the next council meeting or submit it ahead of time so you can review it to see if you would be interested in having us actually submit it. It's a reimbursed grant, so that'd mean that the city would need to cover the funds until we were reimbursed. But if you have any questions, once I submit it, you're more than welcome to ask them. And the Granville Community Tree Project, which is one of the reasons we started a nonprofit, can apply for the other grant. And so we can get maybe trees that we can plant around Arbor Day. I know we're talking about doing an outdoor classroom at the middle school. And I always want your permission or your approval to get those kind of grants too because that goes on public property. So basically, I'm just giving you a heads up. Next meeting, I'll try and have those submitted to you so that you can review them.
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work. Just out of curiosity, how much is the grant for?
One of them's three and one of them's four. So we usually don't apply for the full amount. We'll usually stay under a little bit so that they can spread it to more communities that way.
Well, thank you for helping Green Granville.
Yep, and thank you for Prairie. That is such a rewarding feeling to just drive down that smooth little piece of road instead of going all over the place. So it's really noticeable, some of the places that have been paved, and it's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address. Tell us what you're thinking about. Anyone else? See, we have a few visitors tonight. Last call. Okay. Next item on the agenda, under ordinances and resolutions. This sounds like a Jane presentation. Amending fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget.
So first of all, I'm assuming everyone read the memo and my detailed information. Are there any questions that you feel weren't addressed or something that you wanted to focus on that maybe I will overlook?
Questions for Jane?
Good memo.
Jane, I think you did a great job with the memo. I mean, no questions, and there's a lot of numbers, a lot of details. It was very clear.
Yeah, right.
The format has been similar, but a little bit different presentation than you received last year. My goal is to really help you continue to be able to look at things from a 30,000-foot view, which is prudent. And so I tried to take out a lot of the line item detail that I know has been included before because in the end, whatever line item it is, it really doesn't matter. A lot of them might be a conglomeration of some small things, but it was one or two things that kicked it either under or over. So I tried to make notes of that in the margins of the information that you received. I think the two areas that I would like to just reiterate before you make your decisions on this budget amendment is the first thing is that with opioid settlement fund, we talked about this at budget time, being a new fund. We did receive revenue for it this year that was not originally budgeted for, so our original budget for that particular fund is zero. And because by law, all special revenue funds are required to have at least an amended budget, if not an original budget. We added this mid-year. We didn't realize we were getting these funds until they came in. But part of the stipulation is they must be held separate. So that is why we are doing an amended budget to create this fund. Similarly, the American Rescue Plan Act, it did not have a budget, an original budget that was passed by council back in May of last year. However, one of the reasons that all of that funding was sitting in deferred revenue is there was no decision about how it was going to be spent yet. And once you recognize those dollars as federal funding, it kicks off a single audit or a federal audit. Because we've been waiting for the entire tranches to come in and make us whole, we are now approving that as revenue. The 1.666497 is what we got in revenue. We earned an additional, or will have earned, an additional $23,000 this year in interest. And then we have already transferred a chunk of that money out to cover the cost of the house that was purchased, as well as the equipment for the parks. And so all of those line items need to have a budget in there. So those are the two main ones that I wanted to discuss. And then I also wanted to remind you, as there was no original budget amended or adopted in May for the storm sewer tunnels, that is not really a true special revenue fund. And so we are closing that this year, and moving forward, those expenditures will be accounted for in the water. Those are the three main things that I wanted to discuss with this budget amendment, just because it's things I don't feel you've seen. So given that, have I stirred the beehive? Do you guys have questions now? Okay.
Josh? I have a couple of questions. So on the revenue side, we had a decrease in judicial revenue and ordinance fine revenue.
Yeah, that's pretty standard from what I can tell going back. Those are areas that have been.
Declining.
Overhyped in the past.
Okay. That was my question, is if we kind of expect that trend to continue or if that was still sort of catching up from COVID stuff that was just not happening as much.
Just moving over the last three years for trend information, it feels like those revenues are in a decline, which I think is good. It means, you know, less negative things happening perhaps.
Right. Well, we also had the.
I was very, very conservative this year, given that, so that we wouldn't have to make these adjustments next year. But our original budget for '23, '24 in those revenue areas, I have.
Yeah, I wonder if that maybe correlates a little bit with the budgeted prisoner housing that we had.
Very, very, very possible. Yes, exactly.
And then my other question was about the $450,000 less budgeted personnel services and capital outlay for the police department. I don't know if Deputy Chief Feldman can speak to that. Was that equipment and vehicles that weren't realized in last year? Is that some decreasing overtime cost or?
What was the first part of your question? I'm sorry.
It was a lot, $450,000 less expenditure than budgeted for personnel services and capital outlay for the police department. I'm just kind of curious what that comprised.
So those were the main budget, those were the main budget areas that caused that. There are several other smaller, up-down, 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 up-down. But those were the two main areas, was personal services and capital. And they had budgeted almost $80,000 for capital spends using forfeiture funds, and that just did not all get spent this year. It will be spent next year. The personnel services, I think you probably have heard that the police department has struggled getting.
Due to vacancies.
Staffing. And so one of the things that's just good for you to understand is when we do our original budget, we budget at full staff and we budget at full benefits. And we will budget at full benefits for new staff especially because we don't know if they're going to come in and need our fringes or if they're going to have a spouse that holds the fringes. And so we will budget a lot of those new staff positions at full. I have a family, my fringes are going to be really high. And so if we don't fill the positions like a lot of what happened with the police department this year, or the people that hire in aren't taking our full benefits, you're going to see some personnel services fluctuate because of that.
Okay.
So.
So majority of that is then due to vacancies and unpaid wages and benefits because of those vacancies?
Yes.
With some capital. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3318? That's a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget.
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is a resolution discussing the purchase fire truck and installment purchase agreement. Jane, that sounds like yours as well.
Yeah, I'm a big winner of tonight's agenda.
Yeah. Go ahead, you're here.
And I'm so thrilled to be here every day. So you may have remembered me talking about borrowing during our budget meetings, how as a last resort, you only borrow as a last resort. If you have the ability to raise revenue or you have the assets in play that you can use to purchase things, those are always your best bet. You always go to that first. We had had a previous discussion, I think this was right after it first started, when we obligated ourselves for that aerial fire truck, the $1.3 million aerial fire truck. And at that time, the original discussion was to borrow for the difference in the purchase price and what we were given as a grant, which is the $536,000. And at that time, being so new, I didn't have a great handle on what the position was, and so I just went with it. I'm like, okay, we're going to do an IPA. Well, then, as I got into things, I started to think, you know what? We have the capital, we don't need to borrow. And then they destroyed one of our new fire trucks, and we have to purchase another new fire vehicle. And so in my mind, I said, already kind of have everybody in line with this IPA for this particular aerial. It's going to be a 10-year IPA. My goal is to not borrow for the next truck. We would come to you with an ask for the spend of the whole asset, and then we would have one that was fully paid for and two that we were financing over. I think the aerial is 15, or the pumper is 15 and the aerial is 10. So that's why this is contradictory to what I've been saying, but this is what the thought process was behind entering into this IPA or requesting your permission to borrow and enter into this IPA. A couple of things that you need to know is this is an IPA, I think, much like the pumper truck. I think we have the same out clause, but after four years, we can pay off our IPA. For this particular one, I just wanted to bring you some statistics. If we were to pay off this IPA after four years, we would save roughly $45,000 in interest, and the payout in 2028 would be $321,000. So things to keep in mind, things that I will be constantly putting back in front of you, asking you, what do you feel? How, you know, our financial position is this? How do you feel about this? Is it worth saving $45,000 to make that payoff right now? A lot can change in the next four years. But I did want to bring that to your attention. Does anybody have any questions about the memo or the actual act of borrowing?
I just have a comment, and that was the interest rate looks pretty good. And I see that, and some of our investments, we're getting, not all, but some of them like 3.85, so it seems to make a lot of sense to me.
You know, part of the bank, banking industry right now, especially with the volatility and the rates, are they going up or are they staying the same? We did have some difficulty getting our banks to go sure, and we'll help you with that. So, but when I saw the rate from, Horizon is actually our main bank. When I saw the rate from Horizon, I was pleasantly surprised. So I think they worked really hard for us on this. I'm very happy.
Any questions or comments from council?
You referencing, that was 399, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Is that fixed for that first?
It's fixed for the life.
For the life?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, what was the interest rate on the other one that we did a year ago? Do you remember?
I think it was in 2.7, in that just under 3 range.
Okay.
So.
Obviously, it'd go up a little bit.
I expected it to go up much, much more than this. I expected us to be healthily in the fours, but it was under fours.
Well, I think this is a good plan. Keep an eye on it, and if we have an opportunity to pay it off early, that's great.
Yeah, because I think we have the same arrangement with the first IPA. I haven't done the math on that one yet, but that's another one that, when it's time, I'll be bringing to you just to see what your thoughts are on paying that off early. So I'm looking to look at.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3319? Resolution approving the purchase of fire truck and installment purchase agreement?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any other final discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is regarding the vacation of a former sanitary sewer easement, which I understand is no longer necessary. Dennis, anything you want to also?
I just want to say that this is a housekeeping matter with the Come and Goes, new station here on Chicago Drive. They were required to build a new sanitary sewer connection, making the old one obsolete. And so this easement release is housekeeping and cleaning that up so that it's no longer required.
Questions for Dennis? Josh?
So it looks like basically it just serves that property and then the Arby's next door?
Yes.
Do they remove the old sanitary sewer then? And the old easement, they just leave it buried then?
They just.
It's just disconnected?
Yep, and construct it over the top of it.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3320? The resolution to vacate the former sanitary sewer easement?
So moved.
Or?
Motion and support. Any other discussion, questions, comments? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next items, consent agenda, few items on there. And adoption would be in the best interest of the city because there's a purchase in there of police badges. We have the fire EMS report and the investment report for May, minutes from the downtown development authority for June 8, and a Resolution 3321. That is for the Granville Metro Council removing Hastings from that entity, as per their request, I believe. Also, there's authorization for the Children's Advocacy Center agreement. Renee, I know you're very involved in that. Anything you want to? We've been doing that a number of years.
We have done, and quite honestly, it's a center that is absolutely amazing for victims. So we strongly urge that we continue doing that.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like we've been doing it for a really long time. And unfortunately, the services are used. And that would be $3,400 for this year, which seems like phenomenally low amount for what they do. And also then, there is a request to purchase badges from the police chief. And so that is, that would be from on-duty gear and the amount of $12,080. So is there anything, anybody like to discuss in particular about any of these items before we take a motion and vote on it? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
And support. Any other final comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Meringa. Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, city manager's report, what have you got for us tonight?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Josh, let's start with you for council member comments. Fourth of July's coming.
Yeah, Fourth of July's coming, but I don't want to steal Paul's thunder. And Teresa's going to talk about it a little bit. But looking forward to that. So next week, events kick off on Friday, right? Or Saturday with the ballgame? You'll talk more about it, I'm sure. But, no, I just want to say thanks to Teresa, I guess, in particular. I sent you all an email today. I don't know if you've seen it yet or not, but Teresa's been helping us supply for some recognition through the Michigan Municipal League recently. There was a Bridge Builders Main Street Mini Grant program that she applied for a few weeks ago. And I haven't heard what the result was of that. It was like kind of a crowdfunded or crowd-voated type of project to activate the alley over by the money building there downtown with some artwork and then some seating facilities, just kind of a small amenity type of thing. But appreciate her taking the initiative to apply for that grant that involves working with a local artist to do the mural and that sort of thing. So that's wonderful. I'm anxious to hear if we were the recipient of that grant or not. But then she also worked with, JR and I were involved a little bit with providing some information, but she helped us apply for the Community Excellence Awards again this year for the Commons Downtown, which some of you may recall, in 2012, we actually won the Community Excellence Award, which is statewide recognition for a community project from a member community of the Michigan Municipal League. And so we're one of nine projects that have been submitted for that, for the Commons, for the downtown market. And so we'll find out, I guess that's changed a little bit. They have a panel of judges that will vote on that to kind of determine like a four or five finalists that will go to the convention and make a presentation to the membership, and then there will be voting on those. So at this point, we don't know if we're one of those four or five, I think it's four, finalist projects. But just want to say appreciate Teresa putting in time and effort to apply for those and kind of, you know, get some of those projects out there on our behalf. And I look forward to hearing kind of what the results are on that. But just want to let you all know about that, that that was, that's out there. It's on their website now. You can go take a look at the other projects as well. So there's no voting yet until the convention, but just appreciate her efforts to get Granville out there on the statewide stage to apply for some of these recognitions for all the wonderful things that are happening downtown, so.
All right, don't quote me, but I saw on something that Ellie Grant moved to the semifinal stage, and I think Granville qualified for the semifinals. So I think I saw.
Thanks for nodding.
I saw that on something, so.
Yeah, hopefully some of you voted.
Yeah, I did too.
A few times, pushed it out there, but yeah, it's great.
This time you could.
You could vote once a day.
This time you could vote early enough. And then I will not be here for Fourth of July, but I want to echo what Josh said about just the excitement for that and the hard work that so many people are putting forth to make that happen. So thank you to everyone who is giving up their time and talent to put on Granville's wonderful Fourth of July event. And then I just had a final question, and that was at our previous meeting, we had a gentleman speak about his water bill. And I just wondered if there was any movement on that or a resolution to that, or where we're at with that, so.
There's, there's more information to the story. I'd be glad to talk with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Learn more.
Great, great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for the follow-up. Good.
Yes. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Jane, you said you're thrilled to be in the job. Well, we're thrilled to have you. The finance, the amended budget was easy to read, easy to understand, and just all the stuff you do. Thank you so much. That's it.
Okay, I guess I have a few things. First of all, forgive me, Charlie, because I haven't driven by there since last week, but what's the status of the kayak launch?
We still haven't gotten anybody to come in and take the tree out. I've been working on it. I've been looking at the other, like I told you, what the green or the other boat was used to be moving down there.
Oh, okay.
Getting it more accessible down there than the water is having.
What is the problem in getting somebody to remove the tree? Is it?
Because it's half, well, three quarters away out in the water.
Yeah.
And once we get that out, there's a log jam down river from it.
Yeah.
That unless Mike or Paul gives me some dynamite, I don't know how to move it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate the update, too.
So if you see dynamite on the next bill listing, you'll know.
I'm in favor of that, and I want, I want to be there. And maybe we could rattle off, you know, somebody.
Right.
You know, that would be kind of a fun idea, actually. Okay, second of all, I saw tonight on Channel 8 body cam video from a Grand Rapids police officer body cam. How about that? First time ever. This is, we all knew this was coming.
Granville.
Granville police officer from his body cam, yeah, right. Kudos to the city of Granville for having body cams on our police officers. And how disappointing that, it doesn't look like Auto County, the, who was the responding department there, still does not have that. Anyway, so I thought that was pretty noteworthy. That's the first time. Anyway, Fourth of July, so I was only going to talk about the softball game, but since Josh said I should maybe run it down. It all starts on Friday, by the way, with the beer tent provided to us by our downtown folks and our, and the Chamber of Commerce, I believe, is with them. Anyway, whoever's giving it to us, I believe it's those folks. That is 6:00 to 9:00 PM with live music on that Friday night. Then we have the Buck Creek Run, of course, the annual Buck Creek Run Saturday morning. The event I wanted to highlight, though, is that night is our softball game, our annual softball game at Wedgewood Park, 7:00 PM between the police department and the fire department, with a little help, I guess, from DPW and a few others. You know, we're revving this game up a notch a little bit in terms of entertainment value, so we'll have some live music. There'll be snow cones, there'll be pizza, pizza, there'll be this, this blow-up thing from Family Friendly, which is a, what is this thing? I'm not sure. It's a slow pitch or, it's a pitching game for kids, slow pitch softball. Anyway, a game for kids there. It's a fun event, and I would just encourage any folks who can hear me, who are going to be around Saturday night, to just come think about attending that free event on Saturday night. Everybody knows what an awesome day we have on the Fourth of July here. And I don't need to go through it all, but I will mention that the Penny Carnival is back this year on the Fourth of July. It's been gone for a few years, so there'll be more stuff for the little ones this year than, like we've had in the past. But everything else is going to be, it has before with the Arts and Crafts Show and the, of course, the parade. Ah, the parade. Show hands from city council members who want to be in the parade with the city council entry. Okay, good. Oh, great.
Yes.
All right. Randy's getting us a car. I'll confirm that with him from the Ford dealership, like we've done in the past. And then I'll let you know. We're, we're in the front. I forgot what number we are, but I'll let you know. I'll give you the info anyway. And you all know the rules.
Yes.
So, oh, one thing I wanted to mention about this game, too. It's possible, if he's feeling well, by the way, because there's money being raised at this game for charitable cause, and then this year it's going to be for our own Matt Butts. And if Matt is feeling well, he may attend that game. So, all right, throw it out there. That's it.
JR?
Yeah, thank you, Paul, for the updates. Looking forward to the Fourth of July. This past week, Mayor and Dennis and I had a chance to meet with Randy Thalen from The Right Place, which was always a treat to hear about development and opportunities, and where does Granville fit into that piece of the pie. And I think there's some awesome things coming. I think, you know, if we fast forward 10 years from now, we're going to sit back and think, 2023, when we started talking about all these things that are going to start happening or keep happening, we're at a cusp right now of downtown development. And I'm really excited for that, with the help of our city manager and with Teresa, echoing that as well from, from Josh. So absolutely looking forward to the next phase of Granville. Thank you.
Just want to wish everybody early happy Fourth of July. Hope everybody's safe and has a great time. Especially, Paul, thank you very much, Josh, and Marcy in particular. I know you've done a lot of work for Fourth of July.
You're here. Marcy has gone above and beyond this year, as she has in years past, and really holding this celebration together. And thank you very much. I should have mentioned that.
Thank you. Yeah.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry, I meant to say this earlier, but since it's timely, I've mentioned this before that we have a lot of projects going on in the parks this year. So just FYI, the Wedgewood Park Playground will be closing this week for demolition. And then the week after the Fourth of July, it will be starting to be reconstructed with new playground. The Calvin Crest Park Playground is now completed and is available for use, right? I'm sure it looks beautiful. I have to go check out the final product yet. But then we're also going to be constructing new pickleball courts over at Wedgewood as well, over by where the horseshoe pits were kind of on the north side of the park. So that will start in the next couple of weeks also. So we'll see some construction going on there, but hopefully for big improvements for Wedgewood Park. So just want to make sure people knew that too, because it'll be happening in the next couple of weeks before we meet again.
There's nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Support.
And support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, guests, for being here tonight.